Good evening. It is Monday, March 15th, 2021. It is 6:30 PM. This is a Carney Board of Aldermen meeting. We'll call a meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Survey if you had a chance to make roll.
I have taken roll. Everybody in the present, and you have a call.
Move on to the consent agenda. Board, you'll see presented the consent agenda. Are there any questions or items of discussion on the consent agenda? As presented.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda presented. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to Mayor's remarks this evening. I'm excited to welcome two very special guests we have with us this evening. Mr. Henry and Ms. Rose are here this evening. And I'm going to present them each with some recognition. And both of them took it upon themselves on a nice day to pick up trash in their neighborhood. So the recognition I would like to provide to them reads, "Congratulations, on behalf of the citizens of Carney, Missouri and our Board of Aldermen, thank you, Rose and Henry, for picking up after others to make your neighborhood beautiful while helping to protect animals, both those in the wild as well as our pets. Picking up trash is always a valuable community service as everyone appreciates a clean community. Just think, if everyone took time to pick up trash, what a beautiful world it would be. I am proud of you and your brother for recognizing a problem and addressing it on your own initiative. As you have learned, volunteerism is such a rewarding experience. Thank you again for making Carney a better place to live. Sincerely, Mayor Randy Pogue." Henry Rose, if you want to come up, I'll present you with your letters.
If you guys want to get up and take a picture, welcome to do that.
Congratulations, Henry. Job well done. Congratulations, Rose. Job well done.
Why don't you turn around and just have her...
Want to stand up here and take a picture with me?
Stand up there. Okay, smile.
Yeah, we can see that smile.
Another fun example or reminder that you don't have to be an adult to make a difference in your community. So, once again, we appreciate you too. Next, I do want to mention that we do have another meeting with the mayor scheduled for this Thursday. So, just a reminder, the citizens of Excelsior Springs and Liberty, Smithville, Clay County, Platte City, they all have support of the city government to adopt a use tax. As you are hopefully aware, the city of Carney has placed a use tax question on the April 6th ballot. And I am scheduling a meet with a mayor meeting to be conducted here at City Hall and via Zoom. This is our second of three. We'll spend some time discussing the use tax and how we plan to see it used to provide improved city services to our residents here in Carney. So, as I mentioned, our next meeting is Thursday, March 18th at 6:30 PM. And if you have any questions about the use tax or anything else for that matter, I would love the opportunity to sit down and speak to you about that. Next item under Mayor's remarks, which did not make the agenda, but one absolutely important to discuss is I'm in the process of establishing a diversity and inclusion committee. And our City Hall's own, both Shelby will be co-chairing that committee with Dr. Kelly from Carney Eye Care. And, you know, we had to temporary halt our city spirit program due to COVID. But now with things kind of loosening up and vaccinations ongoing, we're kicking back up to continue those, that plan and other events. So, I am extremely pleased that those two ladies have accepted my task at co-chairing that committee. And there'll be more information to come up next. I conclude my Mayor's remarks, and we'll move on to the Ministerial Report.
Mr. Mayor, we had a request from Gary Hall. He had donated the property to us up on the corner for the Jim and Jerry Hall Park. And he was asking if we could place a sign there. He'd pay for the sign. And we were working with him on a layout. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that we're doing that. I don't want to put us in a position, it's an unfunded thing. But we do have a master plan. We'd like to show it off and give folks, you know, a chance to, well, just know about that that piece of ground is up there and owned by the city and planned to be used by a park, or a park.
I didn't intend to interrupt the Mayor's remarks, so thanks for covering for me the...
Well, I appreciate it. We just wanted to share it with the board, make sure that we're not, you know, putting you in a position where you're going to have to say, "Well, I don't know when it's going to be funded because there's not a dime in the budget tonight for that." It's just, but Gary wants to pay for the sign, and he'll pay 100% of it. And so, we'd like to work with him and try to get that up there.
Obviously, the green space that the city owns, that prospect in 92 Highway...
Right.
...northeast quarter, quartered there.
Yes.
And it's reserved for a future Steener Park.
Yes. And Mr. Mayor, the 2021 Household Hazardous Waste Schedule for Mobile Collection Events has been announced, and we are placed on the November 13th weekend. And we did ask for it to be at the tail end, and that'll be a nice, cool day to work. We worked on when it's been in the summer, and we can't stand that. So this will be a good, a good time to hopefully make collections. We've had pretty good, pretty good attendance at those. And also wanted to let you know that we are working with KISIC Construction. Progress on the water line is taking place. Even today, they worked on it. And Donnie, I don't know if you have any particular comments you want to make about it. But we do recognize that there's an opportunity to replace some tubes that have either collapsed, corroded, or just simply filled full of mud that needs to be replaced. And we're going to take the opportunity to do that.
And they said that as soon as they cross Major Street, they're going to bring in two more crews, a boring crew to get across 33 and a cleanup crew to do the tie-ins and taps and stuff from the old line to the new. They're going to, they're going to charge the south end of the line, Major to Washington, and get the back T samples there. And then they're going to do all the tie-ins. And then they'll be cleaning up and moving on, getting out of here.
All the communication I've received from residents has been very positive about KISIC and being good workers in the area. Do we have any idea when they would possibly be putting down any grass seeds? As they move, or are they going to do it all at once, or...
Probably after the tie-ins, because they have to redig up areas to get the tie-ins done.
Makes sense.
It'll be done after the tie-ins, I'm sure.
Okay.
But I'll talk to them and tell them when to get down as soon as possible.
Okay.
When they're done moving dirt stuff. I will make sure of that.
And also simply want to bring to your attention that the spring bulky item pickup is scheduled for the end of this month, March 29th through April 1st. And that is scheduled on the residence trash day. So if your trash day is on Monday or Tuesday, whatever day that is, is the day that you can be permitted to put out bulky items. We have rules on our website as to how, as to what you can put out. And it's large items, not loose items. So, that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
There are no public requests or petitions. We do have, I think, three public hearings this evening.
Mr. Mayor, Chad and Kimberly Curtis are seeking a petition to vacate a utility and drainage easement, submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their March the 8th meeting. At a public hearing, the commission voted unanimously, six to zero, to recommend, recommend approval of the application at 1707 Stone Lake Drive to vacate a utility and drainage easement along the rear lot lines of the property and a portion of the adjacent Stone Lake Pond tract that backs up to the... And that, this hearing's been scheduled for that. And David Pavlich is online if he needs to make an additional report on that. I thought he was.
Yeah, I'm online. I was just waiting to be called. The public hearing, part of the public hearing purposes is to contact utility companies to give them an opportunity to...
You're barely heard. You're barely audible. David, can you hear us?
Is this better?
Yeah.
Is that better? Yeah, part of...
It's getting better all the time.
Part of, I'll yell. Part of the public hearing is to, for us to contact utility companies that are affected by the utility easement vacations. And we have done that, and we've got no objections from any of the utility companies. Also, the Homeowners Association has been involved in the applications for this and for the final plat that'll follow up this, and the Homeowners Association since then as well.
Thank you. Alderman Barker, do you have any representation? Do you have any comments, or...
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. At this point, we'll open up the floor for public comments. If you are for or against this request, please move forward to the microphone, state your name and address for record. Floor's open. Seeing nobody move, the floor for public comments or... Questions or discussion from the board on this?
It looks pretty cut and dry. Looks like they're needing more space. From what I see, the overflow from the upper pond to the rear pond is still intact because there's enough greenway there to make that happen. So, I don't think this is an unreasonable report.
There are no other questions or discussions from the board. Shall we read the ordinance by the first time?
An ordinance vacating utility and drainage easements on Lot 43 and part of Tract A, Stone Lake subdivision.
Make a motion to approve as read?
I second.
Favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance vacating utility and drainage easements on Lot 43 and part of Tract A, Stone Lake subdivision.
Motion to approve on the second reading?
Second thought?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And I, we have another item...
Yes, sir. And I'll pull the board for the record. Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, the next item is also scheduled as a public hearing. No, it's not a public hearing. It's, it's Stone Lake to replat at their March the 8th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission also voted unanimously, six to zero, to recommend approval of an application from Chad and Kimberly Curtis, 1707 Stone Lake Drive to replat Lot 43, final plat in Stone Lake subdivision to add approximately 25 feet to their rear property line acquired from the Stone Lake Homeowners Association. And the staff report is enclosed, and Mr. Pavlich can add to that if he needs to.
And this is simply an application to add that ground to their lot. The Homeowners Association signed a warranty deed in support of the application. And that's on file and with approval tonight. And then for the final plat, the Curtis as well will also record that deed from the Homeowners Association to them at the same time.
Alderman Barker, do you have anything to add? The ordinance, by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the Stone Lake replat of Lot 43 and part of Tract A, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of easements thereon.
Motion to approve on first reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the Stone Lake replat of Lot 43 and part of Tract A, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of easements thereon.
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote's unanimous, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, a third item on, under public hearings, Wayne and Sheila Rickle of 606 South Grove, public hearing is scheduled to consider a request from them to renew a conditional use permit for, for a single-family dwelling used in a commercial zone district. The prior conditional use permit had a five-year expiration approved in 2018. The Rickles are requesting the CUP be renewed without a time limit expiration. At the, after the public hearing held by the Planning and Zoning Commission on March the 8th, the commission voted unanimously, six to zero, to recommend approval of the application from Wayne and Sheila for renewal of a conditional use permit to use the property as a single-family dwelling, subject to the following conditions. The conditional use permit shall expire if the property becomes vacant for a period of six consecutive months, or at such time, a commercial tenant occupies the building. And two, the property shall meet the residential parking requirements, including but not limited to the restrictions pertaining to commercial vehicles in residential neighborhoods. So, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider that. And Mr. Pavlich can correct me where I'm wrong on this, or add to me.
I don't think you were wrong with anything in your report.
Right.
The Planning and Zoning Commission felt that rezoning the property to a residential use was not something that should be considered because it lies in an area, you know, the triangle area between Grove and 33 Highway, 92 Highway, where there are several commercial uses. And we would anticipate, as the plan anticipates, that that area at some point in the future will all be used as commercial properties. However, the, this applicant, you know, the Rickles, they have had that property available, and they've not had a commercial tenant. And they've come to the P&amp;Z and to the Board of Aldermen on multiple occasions requesting a conditional use permit. Their application today, as Jim said, would remove a five-year period that would prevent them from coming back to the boards. I'd like to have two other times in the past.
Thank you. Alderman Barker, do you have anything to add to that?
I would just add that our concern on the planning and zoning was to protect the commercial side of this and not have it be permanently residential. So, we're, we feel pretty confident that that will happen with the way that this is written.
Okay.
Kathy, the way that it's written, if the Rickles sell that piece of property, is it automatically guaranteed that the new tenant gets to use it as residential?
Yes, the CUP, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but the CUP goes with the property?
Yes, it would. Yeah, there was a... Yeah, there was a condition related to that in the previous approval from 2018. That was condition number four, that the request was to remove that condition in this application.
But at the same time, the same, the same caveat would, would apply. So that if it's set empty for six months, it would automatically revert back to...
Yeah, I just didn't know if the new tenant had to come back in front of us and do all this stuff.
All right, at this time, we will open the floor for public comments. If you are for or against this request, please present yourself at the podium, state your name and address for the record. Floor is open.
Good evening. My name is Brad Earl, and I'm looking at Jacob Crawford to the north on 7 East 6th Street. It is a four-unit apartment building. And I'm in favor of the Rickles getting the conditional use permit as they request. I think it will benefit the apartment building and that the tenants that I have will have residential neighbors rather than commercial neighbors. Any questions for me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Yes, my name's Wayne Rickle. I own the property, 606 South Grove. Excuse me. I would like to get this apartment residential because the reason I haven't been able to sell it, which I had sold a couple of times, and with the digital permit ending in a couple, three years. But what we feel that's going to happen, and the reason I've held onto the property for so long, is someday someone's going to want to come in and want his Norplex and buy property next to it, and possibly the old house next south of me, and tear it down and build something next to CBS, which I thought would happen for me. And anyway, I would appreciate it if you would help me out with this.
Seeing no one else move, the floor is closed for public comment. Any additional questions, concerns from the board? If not, could you read by title only, please?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit at 606 South Grove Street, allowing a single-family dwelling in a commercial district.
Motion to approve on first reading?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit at 606 South Grove Street, allowing a single-family dwelling in C, Commercial District.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote's unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll move on to old business.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed is the proposed agenda or the proposed budget request. It has been modified to restore the KADC funding to $70,000. It was presented at $50,000. And to do that, we eliminated the Christmas decorations of $16,000 of the park fund budget, lowering the transfer to the general fund to the park fund by $16,000. Also reducing City Hall cemetery maintenance by $4,000. If needed, that $4,000 would be funded directly out of the cemetery fund. And subject to any other changes this evening, the budget ordinance has been prepared and it's been closed in 7A. That we would ask the board to consider.
And we obviously had our last meeting, went through a detailed review, and we've had additional time to review. Are there any other concerns, questions from the board?
Jim, do you know, is there additional funding from the new stimulus package?
There is. The mayor might want to weigh in on that.
Okay. So, I received unofficial confirmation that the city of Carney is going to receive almost $2 million, which is almost double, a little, about double what we received out of the first economic stimulus for municipalities. Early indication is, you know, infrastructure, you know, COVID relief, business grants are all things that we could utilize that funding for. However, that, that's, you know, one, we haven't received the money, haven't received the official rules. That's pure speculation at this point. So, there might be a possibility for some of the items in the budget that we were not able to fund, that we may be able to fund. But obviously, once we receive a clear indication on what we're getting and the specifics, the board will be made aware of that when we do. Thank you. As for, are there questions on the budget? If you could read the proposed ordinance adopting the budget the first time by title only, please.
In 7A, the ordinance adopting the FY 2022 budget and personnel salaries for the city of Carney, Missouri.
I make a motion to accept the criteria presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only.
An ordinance adopting the FY 2022 budget and personnel salaries for the city of Carney, Missouri.
A motion to approve on the second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote's unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
All your help in the budget prepared. So I think it's a good budget that's going to serve the city well. So, let's move on to new business this evening.
Mr. Mayor, under new business, you are requesting that Nick DiBenedetto of 905 Walnut and Christie Mayo of 1807 Clear Creek Drive be reappointed to Park Board terms, and also Larry Pratt to be reappointed to the zoning board of adjustments.
I just have a question, a motion from the board to authorize those reappointments. Have any questions or... If you have any questions, why I'm requesting those reappointments.
Did they want to be reappointed?
All three of them did.
Okay, that's important. That's important.
And all three of them have served their respective positions very well.
Then I make a motion to approve. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thanks for that support.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed in A B of the new section of new business is a wayfinding sign agreement with MODOT that David Pavlich can explain. It's enclosed to, it is a draft agreement right now. We are trying to accelerate that approval process by getting your authorization to sign the final form of that agreement.
Am I saying that right, David?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, where we are right now is we're trying to finalize our exhibits for the proposed signs. MODOT won't, MODOT won't consider the agreement until they see all the full exhibits that get attached to it. And like Jim said, we're trying to get approval from our board ahead of time so that when we're ready to proceed through MODOT, we can, we can get our submission directly to them.
And Mr. Mayor, enclosed in A B is that proposed ordinance. And I do want to thank both Jerry Spencer and David for keeping that process moving. And so, there is a picture of the sign in the, of a proposed sign in there, which I don't hold up seeing that.
I have to say the gray scale does not do it justice.
Okay, well, maybe, see if I can do a...
Sometimes the colors don't look right, depending on which printer prints.
While you're looking it up, I will, Jerry, this has been a long time coming, Alderman Spencer, so thank you for picking this back up and getting it past the finish line.
Yes, thank you very much.
And, you know, a thank you to all the previous people that helped with this and this last year. A big thank you also to Carney Crawford and Lacy Staub.
Those are the different locations.
Yeah.
And a very tasteful sign if that color is, those are...
Yes, the bottom band and the top K match color. So, even though it may not appear exact here, it is. And then it is a grayish background with white writing. We have been told by MODOT that that will be very visible and easy to read. And it has taken, gosh, almost four years to come to this agreement that we all liked and MODOT also liked, and so we're very pleased.
So I want to say a shout out to Marie Steiner. She helped with keeping that going as well. So, she, she gets some kudos as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, a part of that was coming up with that K. That was a slow process.
Yeah.
Something so simple. If there are no other questions or discussion from the board, if you could read the proposed ordinance by title only on the first reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a wayfinding sign agreement with MODOT.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a wayfinding signing agreement with MODOT.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote's unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
We do have an executive non-public session scheduled this evening, a closed session to discuss real estate matters for RSMO 610-021 Subsection 2, to discuss leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by public government. or sale of real estate by public governmental body where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration therefore. Can we entertain a motion to enter executive session?
Make a motion to enter executive session.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Seven o'clock, we'll enter into the executive session. Once we're through with that, we'll return to close the meeting.
Right. I'm going to put it on mute.
Congratulations.
And shut off the video.
Brian, can you hear us?
Don't forget to unmute.
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Okay.
What about the camera?
Can you see us, Brian?
We can see you.
All right, move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
Well, let's not forget, um, like two weeks from now, that after that Alderman meeting, let's head across the street so you can see the Missouri bicentennial display we have going.
Oh, that'd be cool.
Alderman Holt?
No, I'm good.
Alderman Lehman?
I'm good tonight.
Alderman Barker?
I was gonna share something that I shared earlier, that we were having some issues with the sidewalk along Nation Road, and I know city staff is gonna be looking into that tomorrow, but just wanted everybody to know that we're aware of it.
Yeah, he texted, Donnie texted me during our meeting, and he says it is definitely related to the erosion control, which makes sense, and so it's working too well.
Yeah.
We'll make sure that that drains.
Thank you for bringing that to attention, and I'd like to hear back on how staff rectifies that. Wednesday is St. Patrick's Day, so hopefully everybody has a happy St.- happy and safe and smart St. Patrick's Day. Mr. Taylor, you're in the meeting?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good evening.